Good evening, everybody. This meeting is now called order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Jason. First item on the agenda is administrative report. Mr. Covington?
Just a couple of items, counsel, for your information to the publics. The curb lane of northbound Talbot Road is going to be closed this Thursday, the 12th, beginning at 8:30 a.m. to allow our maintenance crews to raise a catch basin and repave the affected area, so there will be a little bit of a traffic impact there. It'll last most of the day, so it should be done by the end of the day. We'll have some signs up to help people around that. And as I think we mentioned this last week, we're developing our strategic plan for our human services. This is one of the elements that goes into our comp plan. It'll help us address the 13 priority health and human service needs identified in our 2014 Community Needs Assessment. Publics invited to provide input, and to that they can, there's, let's see, there are five meetings, actually, and so we're inviting folks, one tomorrow, or Wednesday on the 11th, Monday the 23rd, and on the 27th, and then March 3rd. Those are, for meeting times and locations, or for more information, they can get in touch with us at humanservices@rentonwa.gov. It's probably the easiest thing. We can provide you specific information on where those meetings will be. Again, that's Human Services, all one word, at rentonwa.gov. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is audience comment. We have four people here signed up to talk about Nostora Salgado, so if you'd like to just come up to the podium, give your name, city of residence, for the record, and you have five minutes. We have the timer next to the city clerk, so when that light starts to flash yellow, your time is just about up.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the Renton City Council. I'm part of a group tonight here making a presentation on behalf of one of your constituents, Nostora Salgado, who, as I'm sure all of you already know-
Excuse me.
-is now in her 538th-
Excuse me, can you state your name and city of residence?
My apologies. My name is Kenneth Randolph, and I currently live in Lakewood, Washington. But I'm, as I said, I'm here on behalf of one of your constituents, Nostora Salgado, who is now in her 538th day of her incarceration in the state of Nayarit, Mexico, at the maximum security prison called El Rincon. We're here basically tonight to give you a brief update, and to let you, and to ask for further action on your part to follow up on the resolution that you passed back on August 11th. But as far as the update goes, I think that the critical things that have happened since we were here last August, on August 11th, is that, well, obviously, Ms. Salgado is still in prison. But the federal court in Mexico last year, as you may remember, dismissed all of the charges against her and ordered her release. That was all the way back in April of 2014. That decision was under appeal, and since then, it's now been finalized. So that's a final ruling. The government in the state of Guerrero has been based, that was in existence back in August, has basically been swept out of office because of the mayhem that's occurred down there, which some of you may have been following in the news from time to time. But a new government has been installed by the federal government down there, and the other new development in this Salgado case is that the new governor, the provisional governor of the state of Guerrero, has last month made a public statement asking for her Nostora Salgado's release also. So the only holdup, it appears to us right at the moment, is a gentleman by the name of Miguel Munoz, who is the new and the provisional state attorney general for the state of Guerrero. And I'm going to draw your attention, I think all of you got the packet that I gave you, which kind of like, okay, that's just a couple of things I want to remind you of. Obviously, you may remember your own council resolution that you passed, Resolution Number 4223, in which you unanimously, back in August, gave your support for the concept of supporting efforts to free Nostora Salgado. And you also, very importantly, called in the resolution for Washington's congressional delegation, specifically Senator Murray and Cantwell, to assist the congressman for this district, Adam Smith, to take action with the United States State Department. And shortly after that, and I don't think that's any accident, or within three weeks of the time that you passed that resolution, in fact, and that's another item in your packet there, is a copy of the letter from the Congress of the United States, which is dated August 29th, 2014, in which Senator, which was signed by Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, and Congressman Adam Smith, and six other members of the United States Congress. But what I want to, I highlighted for your convenience some portions that I think that really merit your close attention in terms of what we're trying to do here tonight, in seeking your further support. But going to page one, you know, and I quote here directly from the letter, this is our congressional delegation speaking here, said they closely monitored the Salgado case, her incarceration, and they wanted to call attention to the serious abuse of human rights and due process experienced by Ms. Salgado throughout her detention. So this is our own congressional delegation speaking here to our United States Secretary of State. They also, as I indicated below in the highlight, they make the point that the state courts down there and the state government has deprived Ms. Salgado of due process by refusing to consider motions by her attorneys. On the bottom of the first page, and at the beginning of the second page, I've highlighted that portion to indicate that, that highlights some of the conditions of her confinement that she's been subject to since she's been down there, which, according to a Mexican congressional delegation that visited her last year, they characterized those conditions of confinement as psychological torture in a public press conference. And I think in general, our congressional delegation agrees with that characterization. Lastly, at the bottom of the second page, our congressional delegates indicate that they conclude that the authorities of the state of Guerrero have not demonstrated a concern for Ms. Salgado's well-being, and they call for her to be returned to the safety of her family in Washington State. And that's, and so what we're asking-
I'm sorry, your five minutes are up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow Mr. Randolph, Kenneth Randolph, to finish with another few minutes, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer. The speaker be allowed a couple more minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven.
Thank you. Sorry about the delay here, but I'm going to just take another minute here real quick to let you know what we're here for, asking you to do, which we believe will, you know, hopefully speed this process up for her and get her released and get her back here to Renton and to her family. But the first thing that we would like you to do, consider doing, is to send a letter directly, that's from the mayor of the city of Renton and from the Renton City Council, to send a letter directly to the state attorney general, Miguel Munoz, in the state of Guerrero, requesting that he exercise his authority and, you know, take every action that he can to obtain her immediate release from prison and her return home here to Renton. The second thing is, we would like the mayor to consider issuing a proclamation, a citywide, a city of Renton proclamation, declaring February 27th, which is Nostora's birthday, her second birthday in the prison down there, by the way, declaring that to be a Freedom for Nostora Salgado Day, in order to promote a greater public awareness and hopefully, you know, garner more public support than we've had up to this point. And the third thing that we're requesting you to do as a body is to communicate with your counterparts in the city of Seattle government, the mayor and the city council there, and the King County government, the King County Executive and the King County Council, and consider asking them to take similar actions, because we feel that if the combined actions of the three legislative bodies and governments are on board with this, it's going to produce effective results. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, Ms. Rodriguez, here.
Hi, my name is Griselda Rodriguez, and I live in the city of Renton. I'd like to give thanks for allowing me to speak again, and again, I'd also like to give a small update, since we last saw each other, that one of the biggest things that have happened since we last spoke was that the Inter-American Commission of Human Rights requested cautionary measures for my mother, because they found that her life is indeed And also that it's getting, getting more dangerous for her, and that inside that prison every day that she's in there, the provisional governor of state has also gone on public records saying, you know, that she is a political prisoner. And I just don't see why she's in home yet. And I would, our family just appreciates any help that we can get to bring her back home. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gill?
Good evening. My name is Carlos Gill, G.I.L. I'm an emeritus professor at the University of Washington. I taught the history of Latin America for 30-some years. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council President, the rest of you, members of the city council, I thank you for allowing me to address you. I'm here because I support the initiatives of Mr. Randolph and Ms. Rodriguez regarding Ms. Nostora Salgado, citizen of the city of Renton. And in addition to simply expressing my support, I also wish to affirm that backing Ms. Salgado, as a local government body that you are, can only reinforce the image of a concerned, of concerned Americans standing up against political corruption and the violation of human rights. Because my understanding is, without reviewing all of the notes that you have, that when you reach the bottom of the page, she appears to me and to many other people as a political So with all due respect, allow me to remind you and all the rest of us here that your actions back in August are not the first time that an American city, that an American city government stands up for international human rights. Because back in the 1980s, several cities in the state of Washington stood up firmly on behalf of human rights when they declared themselves cities and churches of sanctuary back in 1985, 86. And as cities and churches of sanctuary, they offered safe haven to Central American refugees who came to this country at that time fleeing persecution and the conditions of war at that time in the region. So I wholeheartedly congratulate you for the enlightened and humanistic stand that you've taken regarding Nostora Salgado. And I also want you to know that I concur with Mr. Randolph, that resolving to support Nostora Salgado's freedom is synonymous with upholding principles of human rights endorsed by our government. Resolving to support Nostora's freedom is also recognizing the cancerous effects of illegal drug trafficking that brings woes to Mexican people and to Americans as well, including Nostora Salgado. In the remaining two minutes that I have, allow me also to mention that Nostora Salgado is not the first returning immigrant who became a change agent in her home country. There are many like her, and the historical literature that I worked with tells me that in many ways. The larger pattern is that young people of traditional societies who come to a country like ours, and they return to their hometowns for a short visit or for a longer visit, they discover that they have a different expectation than when they first left of how a government functions, on the obligation and responsibilities of government officials, of police officers, and they run into trouble as a result. There are many examples of that. And so, your resolution back in August, I congratulate you for passing it, and I hope you support Mr. Randolph's petition to follow up on it, so that this poor lady can come back and join her family in Renton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Dr., Reverend Lang.
My name is Rich Lang. I'm pastor of the University Temple United Methodist Church in Seattle, but perhaps maybe a little more relevant, in July, I'm being kicked upstairs to become a district superintendent of 53 United Methodist Churches throughout the King County and Seattle region, which includes three that we have here in Renton. And the very first thing I wanted to say is, I just, I simply wanted to say that I admire what you've done. It is so, so wonderful when government actually cares for its own citizens and residents, and I've been kept abreast, I've heard of what you have done already and the support you have given, and it's wonderful not to be protesting. It's wonderful to come and say, hey, government's working for us. You're all representatives of that, you've all taken, you've put your skin in the game, you've put your name on the line. I appreciate that, and I think, I think all of us do, because it's wonderful to have government work for us. I'm here really simply to say that to you. I also wanted to say that I want to support Mr. Randolph's three options. I also want to put my own skin in the game, however it is that I can be useful, particularly as a pastor, now with some resources of other Methodist churches, and that ecumenical outreach that they have in your community. You know, we, together, together, working together, hopefully helping to change the minds and the consciousness of what is beginning stuck to our neighbors in the South, particularly with the one attorney general. So again, I simply wanted to say thank you. It is wonderful to have a role model of government.
Thank you. I guess I want to say, thanks for coming out and giving us the, an update on activities and so on. I personally feel that this issue needs to be pushed at the federal level. It's good to see you've got our two U.S. senators and seven congress, members of Congress that have signed on and are hoping to get some action on that. And so, you know, any further, any further proclamations or resolutions at this level, we will certainly do that if the council, as a majority, would want to do that. But I, I feel that, it's my hope, that Adam Smith and our senators will continue to make the push. This is an area that's well beyond our access of influence and also of being able to have current information and, you know, it puts us at a disadvantage.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I, and I understand your thinking there. I would like for the council to do whatever it is we can do, and I would be the first to move to make a motion that we do consider a resolution or proclamation for acknowledging a Day for Freedom for Nostora Salgado Day.
We have a second to-
Mr. Mayor, I'd second, I'd like to discuss what some options are, maybe-
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Corbin, that the council consider issuing a proclamation declaring February 27th, Nostora Salgado Freedom for Nostora Salgado Day. Discussion.
Well, one thing I was wondering, can you tell us, can you communicate with our congressional representatives? Have you been, or is that, would that be a good next step?
Well, I could ask them probably the same questions that I'm sure that Mr. Randolph and others are. You know, I can't influence them to do more.
Yeah, I'm curious to know where, you know, what the state of discussions are between the two nations, for one thing.
Yeah. I mean, we certainly can check with Congressman Smith's office and see where, you know, what's going on.
Randy, I can say that I, back during the summer, visited Senator Murray's office and Senator Cantwell's office prior to the drafting of this letter that's dated August 29th, actually was right in the month of August. And there is dialogue, ongoing dialogue, but what the Freedom for Nostora Salgado group seeks to do is to raise awareness regionally to, and Congressman Smith is actively engaged with the Mexican government, trying to do things there, but there still needs to be more. And so I'm in agreement with the group to do whatever we can do to raise awareness. I think a resolution would go a long way in terms of getting more residents here involved in understanding. And all of that does is catalyze a greater amount of pressure that ultimately can result in her release. I think that'll be a wonderful day for us, when she is released, she can come back home, we can celebrate that, and we can feel proud that we were actively involved in playing a role in that. So, a resolution is something that we could do quite easily.
The proclamation.
The proclamation. The other thing that we can do also would be to communicate with, you know, other city governments. We can't make them do anything, but certainly we can let them know that this is something that we feel strongly about, and if they would join us in it, we've done things like that before. I'd be supportive of that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
First of all, I already expressed to the family how, how bad personally I feel about what is happening. And, and this is Randy, what I have read and what I have known from the Mexican side, that's the only thing that I can tell you, what I have read on the Spanish newspapers and Mexican newspapers, and what I have seen in the direct clip from Mexico, on the Mexican TV, which doesn't make it real, just because it's the media, but at least I have another side. They, what is happening is that the newspaper said that, of course, they, when you work at federal level, what happens is that the government that works directly with them is the Foreign Affairs Ministry. So right now, the embassy is the one that is in charge of it. So, yes, they do know that the government of the United States is supporting Nostora. They do know that she lives in Renton, and they do know that the Renton has been supporting her. And they do know as well that several organizations around the United States, as well as the Human Rights Commission, commission, have been issuing a letter, asking for, you know, for information about her health and making sure that she is being protected. Said that, I know that they are waiting for, in 10 days, for new information about how is her health and what they are doing, and what her family has expressed to me, is that the lawyer from Mexico is coming next week to meet with the lawyers here to see what is going in her case. But as the mayor say, we concur with him, this is at the federal level now, but also I know that a lot of the congressmen in Mexico are now supporting her as in her own, in Mexico, which is also good, because it's not now politicians from here, but also from Mexico that are helping her case. So I don't know a lot of the situation, because I am not over there, and I can, I cannot talk to them, but that is, that is what I know. And I, what I think is that as long as his lawyer is here next week and they can talk with the family directly, they also will know more about what is going on. But it's a good idea that if we get more information from the congressman, that way we can get a better idea of what we can do, because as local government, I don't think they would really care. And the only reason why I say that is because I am from Mexico and I know why they care or not. But, I don't know. That's just an opinion.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Mayor, in the meantime-
Hold on one second now. I heard somebody trying to speak. Oh, okay, go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, as I was saying, in the meantime, aside from knowing all of the intricacies, intricacies that are going on behind the scenes, I think that what's being presented to us tonight is something that we can do, that could, you know, go a long way in terms of supporting the efforts of the Freedom for Nostora Salgado family. So that, I think that the proclamation is something that we certainly can do, and certainly we can use our influence among our neighboring cities to try and solicit other support as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
At this time, I would speak against passing this motion, because I think, as Ms. Perez so eloquently put out, is that the other attorneys are coming from out of Mexico to talk to the family and so we can find out more. I think we just need more information, and I would encourage us to put this into the administration's hand to find more information and make a more informed decision.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer?
I just wanted to thank Ruth for her perspective, which I appreciate, and just ask, do you think that by doing this, it would harm any of the work to free her? I mean, like, you said they don't care, so-
I don't know. I don't know if it will harm, and I actually talked with Randolph about that, and I actually asked him, because in my experience, any government, like other government, to tell them what to do. So I don't know how much it will help her case specifically, but, but if they think that it will help, and, I mean, as you say, it will not harm us to do it in many form or way. I mean, it will help her. If they think that it really will help her, well, hey, I don't have any problem with that, on the contrary. But I don't think if, I don't know, I really don't know if it will help her or not. In my experience, normally countries don't like other countries telling them, hey, you better do this, if not, otherwise, you know, especially Mexico. We don't, they don't like it. They don't like to be told what to do.
And I can see both sides of this, in that, from their point of view, this will potentially bring additional media attention to the situation, keep the media spotlight, is that here, starting local and moving who knows where.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
You know, I find it interesting that if they're, first and foremost, I think that the Freedom for Nostora Salgado Family Committee, they more than anyone care about no harm being done to Nostora. And if they felt, if they believed that there would potentially be some hazard, and they have Mexican ties and understanding of the Mexican government as well, if they had any concern about that, then we probably would not have been requested to pass a resolution back in August. And if the government, the governmental involvement in trying to apply pressure to the Mexican government was a potential hazard, then that would have meant that what's being done with our congressional body and Secretary Kerry's office could create a hazard also, and I don't see that. I think that it's appropriate to put a spotlight on this. I agree with them, to try to draw attention to it, raise awareness, and a proclamation, I think, serves that purpose. And I think that they, better than us, have the best interest of Nostora Salgado at heart, and I would be in support, if they advised us not to do it, I would support that. I think that they have a better lens of, you know, what they feel could contribute to the outcomes that they're looking for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I agree that they are looking for the best interest- I agree that they, they are looking for the best interest of, of Mrs. Salgado. Of course, it's her daughter and her husband, and, and of course, they are in pain, and I cannot even imagine the pain that they are going through right now. And whatever we can do to help them, I am with them one hundred percent. But not because they, not because they really want her to, to be with them, they, 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 that means that they know the Mexican government or they know Mexico, because none of them have lived in Mexico, and none of them or their abysls have grown in Mexico or worked directly with the government of Mexico.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I believe Dr. Gill has his hands up there, would like to make a comment.
Well, I want to, let's finish the council discussion, we've got a motion on the floor, so...
Call for the question, if there's no more debate.
Is there any additional comments, council? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we draft a proclamation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
If the motion passes. Okay, so...
Mr. Mayor, could we hear from Dr. Gill?
Do, is, I think, did you have something just to add to this, or we've passed the proclamation?
I just wanted to confirm the idea that...
Up to the podium. Podium, please.
I just very briefly wanted to confirm the idea that people at a national level, in national level newspapers are aware of what Congressman Adams is saying. I've read in national newspapers references to Patty Mary, to Patty Murray, and other actions that are being taken here in the U.S. So, if you folks do approve a resolution, I think it would reach the higher levels in Mexico.
Okay, we just...
Public and private.
The council just approved a proclamation, so we will be doing that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that council members would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Seeing none, I move that the consent agenda be adopted, presented.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Palmer, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Perez.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a Planning and Development Committee report to present, and I want to thank the two other members of Planning and Development Committee for covering for me today.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee Committee Report. Interagency agreement between Renton, Bellevue, Kirkland, Newcastle, and Redmond regarding coordinated environmental review of Puget Sound Energy's proposed Energize Eastside two-hundred-and-thirty-kilovolt transmission line project. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interagency agreement regarding coordinated environmental review of the Energize Eastside project. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Move the council concur in the committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's all, Ms. Perez.
All right, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Utility Committee has a couple of committee reports.
Okay, Utilities Committee Committee Report. South one-thirty-second Street Sewer Extension Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the project, approve the final pay estimate in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, and release the retainage in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents after a sixty-day period, subject to the receipt of all required authorizations. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Utilities Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the last Utilities Committee Report is the Southeast one-sixty-fifth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Extension. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the wastewater utilities request to establish a new wastewater capital improvement project, Southeast one-sixty-fifth Street Sanitary Sewer Main Extension, which will extend a sewer main between One Hundred and Eighth Avenue Southeast and an existing alley to the west, providing sewer service to nine existing residences. The committee further recommends approval to transfer one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the two-thousand-and-fifteen sewer repair replacement project to fund this project. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Utilities Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have two resolutions and one ordinance for second and final reading.
Okay, the first resolution is regarding the King County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the King County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and annexing the City of Renton to the plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Ms. Palmer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The second resolution is regarding the Energize Eastside Project. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with the cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, Newcastle, and Redmond regarding coordinated environmental review of the Puget Sound Energy's proposed Energize Eastside two-hundred-and-thirty-kilovolt transmission line project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Ms. Palmer, that council adopt this resolution as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final piece of legislation is a ordinance for second and final reading, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section one-three-two of chapter three, remedies and penalties of title-one administration of city code, clarifying the language in subsection one-three-two P for consistency. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Taylor, that this ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Jason. Moving on to new business, before we start with new business, I just wanted to take a moment to thank council members Prince, Perez, and Palmer for joining city staff that Saturday at the Senior Center for Neighborhood Task Force Meeting, or whatever you want to call it, it was the annual meeting of the Neighborhood Association. Mindy Manson and Jillian from Emergency Management gave a great program to the group. We had a nice group of people there. City staff, a lot of city staff members are, were there volunteering their time to cook a meal and serve the people, and also do man booths that we had to provide information. Those are very nice, nice events, so thank you for attending. So, new business, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items to announce. First, on Monday, February sixteenth, council will be canceled, it's a council holiday, which is present today. And then, secondly, on February twenty-third at four-thirty, committee a hole in the council, in the conferencing center, and it will be inclusion training for the council. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I announced a finance committee on February twenty-third at four P.M. in the council conference room, two topics, information technology reorganization and vouchers. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, tomorrow, Tuesday, February tenth at ten A.M., the Transportation Committee will meet in the council conference room. Two items are on the agenda. First one is amend the two-thousand-and-fifteen, two-thousand-and-twenty Transportation Improvement Plan tip, and the second is emerging issues in transportation. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce a Planning and Development Committee meeting. We have one item on the agenda, it's a Viewcrest Appeal, and that will be at three o'clock P.M. on February twenty-third, that's a Monday, in the council chambers right here.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. First and foremost, the cancellation of the Utilities Committee meeting for February the twenty-third. And secondly, being that this is Black History Month, I have returned with some additional Black History information for all of those young minds that are out there at home looking at this, I want you to know that there's a vast amount of history that you should know about. I'm going to head back into antiquity and tell you about a couple of great queens of Africa. One is the name Queen T., and she spells her name T.Y., T.I.Y.E., and she was called the Nubian Queen of Egypt. Now, it came to pass that in the fourteenth century B.C., a wise and beautiful woman from Nubia so captured the heart of the pharaoh, she changed the course of history, although often invaded for their gold, labor, and cattle. And despite being a colonial dominion of Egypt, the Nubians were a proud black people who maintained a strong cultural and political identity for the best part of five thousand years. So, from an early age, T. was taught by her parents never to accept second-class status. Apparently, she learned those lessons well. For the young Egyptian ruler Amenhotep III was so taken by her beauty, intellect, and will, he defied his nation's priests and customs by proclaiming this Nubian commoner, the great royal spouse. Thus, her future offspring, one of whom was to be the pharaoh Tutankhamun, King Tut, became full heirs to Egypt's throne with full, fully royal and divine inheritances. Pharaoh Amenhotep III publicly expressed his love for his beautiful black queen in many ways, making her a celebrated and wealthy person in her own right. And he took her counsel in matters political and military, much to heart. As a final gesture of the great regard in which he held T., Amenhotep declared that as he had treated her in life, so should she be depicted in death as his equal. And so, the colossal sculpture ordered for their joint funery temple thus portrays them as a pair of majestic monarchs, both proud, noble, both serene. The other queen that I would like to mention from antiquity is Queen Hatshepsut. Her name is spelled H.A.T.S.H.E.P.S.U.T., Hatshepsut, and she is known as the ablest queen of far antiquity. This matriarch of ancient Egypt is considered the greatest female ruler of all time. Hatshepsut was the first woman in recorded history to challenge the theory of male domination. After ascending to the throne, she remained there for thirty-three years. Hatshepsut rose to power after her father, Tutmosis I, was stricken with paralysis. With no son to succeed him, Tutmosis appointed Hatshepsut as his chief aide and heiress to the throne. Numerous rivals sought to oust the queen, she withstood their challenges, however, to remain leader of what was then the world's leading nation. To help enhance her popularity with the peoples of her nation, Hatshepsut had a number of spectacular temples and pyramids erected. Some of the towering structures still stand today as reminder of the first true female ruler of a civilized nation. She was indeed the ablest queen of far antiquity. And in closing, I'd like to bring to the attention a couple of books that I think that would be wonderful resources for anyone who's thinking about learning more about Black History and the type that you don't get from most of the textbooks in our schools. There's a book I'll call World's Great Men of Color. The author is J.A. Rogers, and it speaks about some of these people that I mentioned. Another good read would be Blacks in Science: Ancient and Modern, and this book is written, was written back in nineteen-eighty-three by Dr. Ivan Van Sertima. So, in honor of Black History Month, I bring you more Jews of history, and thank you. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On February twenty-third, the Community Services Committee will be canceled, and as well as we'll like to add that I will thank you. All the neighbors who went to the neighbor-to-neighbor meeting, it was a wonderful forum, it was the first time that I, I attended, and everybody was, the leaders of the community are just marvelous, and they were so welcoming and so warm, and, and, and the staff, of course, is always amazing. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's Saturday, Sunday, or whatever day, they are there, you know, working with a big, huge smile, and, and I love them, and I love everybody that was there. And once again, we live in a wonderful community, and thank you very much, absolutely, everybody that was there.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Perez. I, I've neglected to single out Norma McQuiller...
Oh, yeah.
...and the great job she and the community services staff did for that event, so... Okay, audience comment, was there anybody that wanted to address the council? It's a wish of the council?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?